Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you all and welcome. I'm giving notice that this meeting is being electronically recorded. And I think first we have to, out of respect for the committee, we want to congratulate everybody for coming back and having a great year. And hopefully, we can work some of the kinks that we've had in the first couple of days. We've been working on them quite a bit. Our first thing I was doing is recognition for the maintenance staff. For those who are not aware, we had some contested contractual language when we went out to bid the first time for the landscaping contract. That had to be redone, the contract had to go back out to bid, and this left us without landscaping services and probably one of the most important signs of the year in June and July and I believe part of August. And the maintenance staff that we have, the great staff that we have, picked it up and did as much work as they could and kept these fields in the landscaping, had a great job. And we want to do recognition tonight to recognize their efforts. They're fully appreciated by the committee and as the Attleboro School community at large. Mr. Murphy and Mr. O'Neil will be giving the presentation. Thank you Dave and Chris.
If the staff could join us on the podium if you would, go through it right through the glass. Mr. Chairman, before we begin the presentations, I would just add that Mr. Parento, our maintenance supervisor, is not with us tonight. He was also critical in providing the leadership and organization to make sure that the work got done successfully over the course of the summer. At every meeting I've ever been at with Mr. Parento, he was always very quick to immediately turn the attention to the rest of the staff and to give credit where credit is due. So if he's watching, I hope he forgives me for that, but since he's not here to automatically and quickly redirect that, I thought I would just sneak that in. So our staff with us say who helped us keep the yards looking good and aesthetically pleasing, Mr. Jeff Bressel. Mr. Norberto Dorado. Mr. Andre Faria. Mr. John Faria. And Mr. Ricardo Faria. Mr. Manuel Silva. And Mr. Antonio Souza. Obviously, these gentlemen are reflective of our entire staff throughout all nine buildings. They keep them looking as good as they do and they do go a long way in terms of making a good first impression for those visiting the Attleboro schools for the first time. Also being recognized with the chairman's commendation, Mr. Paul Belvance, Mr. Charles Bradshaw, Mr. Franco Saron, Mr. Robert Saron, Mr. Joseph Furtado, and Mr. Richard McLaughlin, who were unable to be here with us tonight, but we'll certainly get their letters and certificates in the mail to them right away. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a community update of school-sponsored events. And we have our new student representative, Mr. Keith Drucker. Keith, thank you very much for joining us. We appreciate you coming along here.
Well, thank you very much for having me, Mr. Chairman. I'm definitely looking forward to working with you all. I will use a clicker. That being said, the school-sponsored events for this school committee meeting, September the 10th, 2012. District-wide, on September the 19th will be an early release day. There will be no morning or afternoon preschool. Also on the 19th will be a parent open house for all elementary schools from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. On the 20th, there will be a parent open house and curriculum night for middle schools from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And finally, on September 20th, the Attleboro Special Education Advisory Council, also known as ASPEC, will meet and greet at 7:00 p.m. in the Brennan Library. How do I work this?
Sorry.
It's because the clicker's on.
No, it wasn't on. I apologize.
Okay, here at the high school, on September 17th will be the first Leo Club meeting. All students are welcome and that will be at 7:00 p.m. in the mini auditorium. On September the 18th, the Advanced Placement Parent Night will be held from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. in the principal's lobby. On September 21st, the MMSI kickoff event will be at 8:30 a.m. during advisory in the mini auditorium. And finally, on September the 24th will be AHS Picture Day. At the middle schools, at Brennan, on September the 11th, the PTO meeting will be held at 6:30 p.m. in the library. On the 14th will be the student, the student school pictures will be taken. At Coelho, September 12th will be the PTO meeting at 6:30. And on the 25th, the information band night will be for parents and that will be held at 6:30 p.m. Finally, at Wamsetta, on September 12th, the PTO meeting will be held at 6:30 p.m. For the elementary schools, at Hill Roberts, on September 18th, the PTO meeting will be held at 7:00 p.m. At Hyman Fine, on September 19th, there will be a book fair during open house in the library from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Over at Studley, on September 13th, their PTO meeting will be held at 6:30 p.m. And from September 17th to the 20th will be their book fair. At Thatcher, on September 11th, their PTO meeting will be at 7:00 p.m. And on the 22nd, the Chalk for Peace Family Event will be held from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Finally, at Willett, on September 13th, the PTO meeting will be held at 7:00 p.m. in the library. And that includes our school-sponsored events.
Thank you, Keith. Again, welcome aboard and we're glad to have you with us. Okay, next item is we have approval of the minutes from 8:20 12. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Stand? Motion passes. Okay, next is open forum. There are guidelines available at the table. This is a time when members of the public may address the school committee. Open forum is not a time for committee members to engage in dialogue with members of the public. Guidelines for open forum are available to you. Please know that we are interested in what you have to say, but we cannot respond without background information on your issue. Please come forward to the podium and state your name and address. We have nobody wishing to speak at open forum. Moving on to our consent agenda. We have a vote to accept an anonymous donation in the amount of $1,000 to the Thatcher Elementary School Gifts Donations Line for the Accelerated Regal Program. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Stand? Motion passes. We have a vote to accept a donation in the amount of $420 from the New York Life Foundation to the Thatcher Elementary School Gifts Donation Line. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Stand? Motion passes. We have a vote to accept the donation in the amount of $2,718 from the Bluefish Boosters, which represents the 2011 Rome Boulevard Race Proceeds allocated for pool improvements at the Attleboro High School. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Stand? Motion passes. We have a vote to accept the donation of a wooden clarinet from the family of the great Ralph Cooper Woodworth, class of 1942, with an estimated value of $200. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Stand? Motion passes. We have a vote to clear one Emerson Cabinet Grand Piano and one Fisher Studio Upright Piano as surplus at Hyman Fine Elementary School as they are damaged and no longer being used. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Stand? Motion passes. A vote to declare two AMF Automatic Waste Compactors at Hyman Fine Elementary School as surplus as they are antiqued and no longer being used. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Stand? Motion passes. Onto new business. We have a school opening report by our superintendent, Dr. Peter Durkin, I'm sorry, and our assistant superintendent, Mr. David Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. I'm going to just give a snapshot of what happened in our buildings last week. It was an extraordinarily high optimistic view. Our convocation was held. It was very well received. I'm always amazed how 700 people in one auditorium could be as respectful and as listening as they are. The theme of our work this year is high expectations. That is not different from years past, but in many ways, it really resonates with both the adults and students that if we expect more from ourselves, not only in what we can achieve, but the effort we can show and the civility we can express with each other, we can definitely expect that from our children and our families. Attleboro High School, Mr. Rooney addressed every student in several assemblies. And essentially, his message was, "Blue pride." But taking those words to mean, personal responsibility is developed every day. And he did an excellent job of framing what personal responsibility means as a student, whether you are a freshman, sophomore, junior, or senior. Students and staff were energized. Advisories took place for three days. Mr. Sawyer did a request and I granted him as part of his new role. He is still keeping his advisory and has a group of very exuberant sophomores, as exuberant as they can be at 7:15 in the morning. And he holds that advisory in our teaching and learning conference room. Communication was a little bit hampered. We had some issues with our intercom system, but I was very assured by Mr. Rooney and his staff that that was, there were several backup plans and I believe that's totally fixed as of now. However, communication was a critical feature. I think Mr. Rooney, in his entry into the building, demonstrated to many, many children and families what he is about and who he stands for in terms of the leader of this building, as well as with his staff. And several students are coming to us, interestingly enough, after the school year has started, to learn more about Attleboro High School. They are currently in other high schools. And Mr. Rooney and I are arranging for student tours for several of them that might be moving over to Attleboro High School, knowing how much we have to offer and the opportunities that are there. And that's a credit to the staff there, as well as what we have been able to accomplish there. Moving on to Coelho, Mr. Bowles addressed every student also. His rallying cry was to do your best and students repeated that throughout the day. He has set himself a personal challenge that within two weeks, he's going to learn every fifth and sixth grader's name. And he is being tested. He asked for every child to come up to him and introduce themselves. And I'm headed there tomorrow morning and we'll see how he's doing with his schedule. He has set up for himself many team meetings the next few weeks and to really stress the theme of high expectations, particularly for Coelho, where our performance could be more and which has a new light in terms of what we're doing there. Ms. Saltzman at Brennan School met with every class, talking about the goals she was setting for herself, in turn, asking students to set their own goals by grade, as well as by individually. At Wamsetta, grade-level teams met and they decided what their grade-level rules and norms were going to be. Very active participation with students reading the student handbook, but doing it in a different way where they felt what was most important for them, to keep their school safe and have a respectful environment to learn. Hill Roberts, the focus for the year is work and effort. At Hyman Fine, we opened many of our newcomer programs and of course, our ELL kindergarten of which this year, last year there were 16 languages, this year there are 10, with no less challenges with that. And many of the teachers had students answering questions of, "What makes you so smart?" And it was very interesting listening to them. At Studley, I was very enamored how Ms. McSweeney somehow instilled a sense of confidence in every student who came off that bus when they were asked, "Do you need someone to walk you to your classroom?" "Oh, no. I know where I'm going." So they were very confident and Studley had a very good opening. At Willett School, Ms. Campbell, I think there were like five of her, because she, everywhere I went, she was there. Clearly, students were very excited about her school spirit challenge, where students have to name and talk about, what does Willett School's spirit look like? And I know I'll be there this week to hear some of their conversations. And at Thatcher, we opened preschool today, not a tier in the place. Some parents, but not kids. And essentially, they really were very, very excited. The traffic to Thatcher, the sidewalks were done and Ms. Inney did not do that by herself, though I cautioned her, she was not going to fix them herself, though she was very clearly wanting to do that. But on a very good note, the school opened with the whole staff pitching in with the number of buses that do arrive there and the number of children we have with so many different needs. So all in all, I would say that we had an extremely successful opening. We do have a few hiccups and my colleague, Mr. Rose, will speak about that. However, each day as we talk about high expectations and continuous improvement, we are getting better. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dave Drucker. Does anybody have any questions from the committee on the school opening report?
Actually, yes, I just want to, for our next meeting, I was just wondering regarding Coelho, if maybe we could have Mr. Bowles come in. I know that there's a little difference in the specials at Coelho compared to the other middle schools. So I was contacted about that, so I just wanted to see, you know, what do they see that this is maybe something better for Coelho? I don't know if you were contacted, if anyone and members were contacted, how they changed, I guess, the specials, how they did it before and how the other two schools did. So I was just wondering if maybe we could have an update on that.
That would be fine. However, I would rather, if it pleases the committee, to wait at least a month or so, so we can see how that's working out. But I will be happy to summarize the difference that Coelho is doing and the other, to the committee. But I would ask if we could just wait in terms of a presentation. The focus is more on getting a more in-depth area of the elective, so instead of having art, music, technology, and I'm paraphrasing here, I'm not specific enough, it would be art for a period of four or five weeks and then music and then technology with that. I know there was a lot of discussion about that last year. And though Mr. Bowles was familiar with it, it was decided to do that. So I would possibly ask Mr. Sawyer, we could put a summary together for the committee and then let's see, maybe in October, after it's been running for a bit, because we're just about getting into the regular schedule, I'll be happy to have the middle schools here to describe that, so families can understand that. Mr. Bowles did get a couple of phone calls. He did say, speak to me about that. I will be there tomorrow. But, and he's also sent a letter home to parents and anyone, and I say that to our families listening at home who have a question, feel free to call him. He is extremely accessible and willing to talk about that. And I think we do have a PTO meeting this week there. So we'll get the information out, but I would ask that we wait just to have a presentation until we can get it up and running. Okay? Yep.
Yes, I worked at that, and Mr. Sawyer, getting something in October.
Yes.
Let it run its course a little bit and see what happens.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add my congratulations on the successful opening of the school year, particularly with the number of individuals who have joined the district over the summer and leadership positions. The committee members had the opportunity to attend a few of the events that have taken place over the last couple of weeks. The Back-to-School Bash that was held at Studley, it was a great sight to see all of the principals lined up and handing out the free backpacks and assisting. I don't know if anyone was working, if any principals were working the grill or not, but certainly there was a lot of participation. We're obviously grateful for that. And then I know some of us had the chance to attend the ninth-grade welcome presentation at the high school, at which it seemed that it was a great turnout of students and families coming into the high school and seeing all that that building had to offer. And I would say that although all of the speakers that night did an excellent job, Mr. Drucker in particular, I thought, offered an excellent welcome to his peers joining the Attleboro High School community. And I hope that the ninth graders and the parents of ninth graders take Mr. Drucker up on his offer to personally welcome all of those ninth graders. So if you're a ninth grader, if you're lost in the hallways of Attleboro High School, Mr. Drucker had a very welcoming speech and said to come up and ask him the questions. And I think that would, he certainly would be well-qualified to answer those questions.
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions from the committee? Okay, now we're going to move on to our transportation update. Mr. Tom Rose, our business manager. Before Tom speaks, I just wanted to remind the committee that the administration did tell us that we really should be waiting till like the first week of October on these transportation issues. Tying up the loose ends, if you will, making sure everything is satisfactory and they will give us, you know, we'll have a clearer picture by October, especially on our fees for service, fee for transportation service. And we know there was a deadline, but with that, which I'm sure Tom will, you know, explain. But again, I think we need to give the administration a little bit of time to work this thing out. They did tell us originally that the first week of October, so we'll hold them to that and we'll have our patience stolen. So, Mr. Rose, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are four things I wanted to say to lead off. Number one, I wanted to thank the principals and the secretaries who did just an amazing job these last four days. Working hard with the students, with the bus company, with me, with our transportation department, doing everything they could to make sure that the kids were coming in, putting in some hours, and they've really worked very, very hard. And I can't, I can't possibly express my thanks enough. I much appreciate it. The second thing I want to say is that there has been huge, huge progress made. We're not out of the woods, not by any stretch of the imagination, but the difference between, or the difference among the phone calls and the emails and the alerts among Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, then today is significant, which is great. It's a sign the progress is being made. The Bloom Transportation Company is getting on board. I think they're getting more comfortable with their new role as not only being the vendor that's going to be providing the transportation for the mini buses and for the regular buses, sidelike, 27 regular buses we have, 11 mini buses. Ballpark about 4,500 students that are eligible to be transported. We'll get the specific headcounts probably later in the month as we start to look at the fee-for-service package. But getting more and more comfortable with their role and working very hard. Which leads to the third item, and the third item is, the next step is for the schools to feel comfortable that their bus list files are accurate. It includes everybody that we should be on the bus list. It includes the right bus number, includes the bus stop, the whole nine yards. Bloom Transportation came in over the weekend and we're looking at 10 files, nine for the schools plus ELC. They came in over the weekend, they updated four of those 10. Earlier this morning, they updated one more and before I came in, they updated another one. So we got six of the 10. That's not to suggest that those six files are perfect. I'm sure that they're not perfect. But it's the next step in passing those files to the schools so that the schools, specifically the secretaries, can take a look at the numbers, look at the files, see if all the changes that we wanted to put in, if they've been included. And then if not, it's a give and take. And that, this give and take process, this updating of the files, that's going to take place all year long. Granted, the number of changes that we're going to have in the month of September will certainly be more than we're going to have probably in the month of March or April. But we're on our way and it's a sign that not only have the schools done a great job of communicating with Bloom as to what we need, changes that we need to make within the bus list file, but it's also an indication that Bloom Transportation is stepping up to the plate, putting in the work, getting the files updated, and trying to be as responsive as possible. And the fourth thing that I just wanted to mention briefly was the fee-for-service situation. And for your parents out there that might be watching this meeting, that are wondering, when am I going to get that phone call that my child has been approved for fee-for-service? The answer is sometime during that first week in October. And the reason is because we have so many changes that are in the process of being made right now. Changes that are being made at the school level, changes that are being incorporated by Bloom Transportation. Some of the changes are being offered by our own transportation department. And what we need to do is we need, as you said, Mr. Chair earlier, we kind of need to let the dust settle for a couple of weeks so that we can get an idea of how many individuals do we have on each of the buses. Now, I'm sure everyone here is probably well-aware, but the folks at home may not be aware. We have four different start and end times for our school schedules, which simply means that some of these 38 vehicles have four different runs throughout the day. Which is why in certain cases, you may see a bus that may not be completely full at a particular time of the day, but it's though, it may also be that same bus that might be completely full, taking kids to the high school early in the morning and then using that same vehicle for pickups at one of the other three stops. So one of the other three, whether it be one at the middle school or one of the two elementary start times. So we need to let the dust settle, get a handle on how many students we have with each, on each of the buses, get those lists up to date, correct, have a good, comfortable feeling between the schools and Bloom Transportation, and then is the perfect time to look at our fee-for-service package, see exactly how many folks have applied, see who we can bring on board, and then make those appropriate decisions in conjunction with Bloom Transportation in early October. And so those are the first four things I wanted to mention. Now let me pause for questions or comments from the committee. Ken?
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Being that this is the first year that we've kind of put a little bit more responsibility on Bloom as far as the schedule.
Yes.
Do we feel that us as Attleboro School System could have done anything better, be better partners, to get them information in a format more usable to them or quicker to them? Is there anything that we learned from this experience that we'd be able to use next year and we should be a lot smoother next year?
Mr. Parent, thank you for your question, because that's a good opportunity for me to make a couple of comments. The answer to your question is, yes. I am certain that there are some things that we can do better to make the transition and the startup for FY14 better. But what I don't want to do at this point is say that I've got my hands completely around the situation and I know exactly what was done correctly and what wasn't done correctly. It's something that's a work in progress. What we do know is that there were files that were transferred over to Bloom in late June. We know that the transportation office worked hand-in-hand with Bloom in trying to make the transition be as effective and as smooth as possible. But to quite frankly, we were also asking Bloom to assume a new responsibility, a couple of new responsibilities. Not only developing all the routes, but also managing, God bless you, managing the call center and being the point of contact. And so we're in the process of looking at ways where we can be better effective, on ways where we can be more responsive. I know what we transferred over in the way of files and meetings and discussions, but I want to take a close look and verify that we can't improve upon that even more than what was already done. So yes, I think there is some room for improvement and I believe that is, the progress that we made for FY13 will make even more progress for FY14. Let me just make one more comment. The key are the bus list files. I mentioned those six files. That's the key. The key is for the schools to feel comfortable, for Bloom Transportation to feel comfortable, that there's an agreement between both parties, that they have the names of the students, they know what bus numbers, and we're comfortable that we're moving forward. they know what bus numbers, and we're comfortable that we're moving forward accordingly, and that's going to be an updated process that's going to take place throughout the year. And good progress is being made and will continue to be made.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Perrin.
Dave.
Thank you. Mr. Rose, I know, I understand your reservation with regard to any specifics about what would be on our, our list of things to improve, and I think that makes perfect sense for the time being. This, my, this is more a comment than a statement. It was before your tenure began, when this change was made with regard to vesting responsibility for development of the routes with the bus vendor as opposed to the school district. It was my understanding at that time that regardless of wherever that responsibility was officially vested, because the bus company is driving the students and we're housing and educating the students, it was going to require collaboration on the part of the school district and the bus company.
Absolutely.
From what you've told me in our conversations here tonight and many other times, that seems to be taking place. So I would just comment again that it, given the fact that there are two partners here, both are very necessary components in order for the system to work efficiently and effectively, that collaboration will continue to be important going forward. And that, again, the specifics, that's going to take time to work out, but I think the broader idea of just making sure that the two pieces need to be working together, that will be true every year, any year.
Yes. Mr. Murphy, let me piggyback onto your comment. I can't say enough about our transportation office and the way they have worked, the way they worked all summer long in the transition with Bloom Transportation and the way they've worked these last couple of weeks, putting in the hours, doing everything they can. As you probably know, they've got the radio in their office, so they can jump in if anything comes up, any emergency or whatever the case might be. So, you know, for now, it's, it's kind of a, of a two-headed system, which is always good, at least for the time being, and they've done a, a very, very good job in trying to help with the transition over to Bloom Transportation.
And just to follow up on that quickly.
Yes.
I think because for the individuals who were here before the changes were made and after the changes were made, I think it will be important going forward to identify as closely as possible which variables changed and what impact those variables may or may not have had. That will, I would imagine, would take time and it's very possible that there will be no impact based on whatever variables changed.
Correct.
But I think that as you're developing that list that you were alluding to a moment ago, that would just be something that would be important to keep in mind.
Correct. Thank you.
Mr. Rose.
Yes.
So Bloom does have their terminal manager, their full-time terminal manager that is their dispatching from beginning to end, because I know that was one of the things that was important.
Absolutely.
In this contract. And on the previous contract, I thought actually in the Bloom contract, they did have the responsibility of the busing, scheduling. So the three years that they had it, all it had to do was either just be updated. So I'm a little confused when you mentioned that is a new responsibility for Bloom.
Well, the point I was trying to make was the development of the routes.
Okay.
Specifically, in the past, the routes were developed by our transportation office.
Right.
And the reason they were developed by our transportation office is because quite frankly, our transportation office really knew the area very, very well and knew exactly where the stock should go. The good news is that every piece of information that it appears that we could transfer over, and when I say we, I'm referring to the Attleboro School Department, that we could transfer over to Bloom Transportation, we did. And now we want to work with Bloom in regard to the finishing off that process. And let me give you an example of that. Before the, before any routes went in the newspaper, Bloom Transportation forwarded all the routes to us, specifically to the transportation office. Take a look, see what you think. Any changes? Make whatever changes you want. So we had the opportunity to make whatever changes back to Bloom, Bloom incorporated those changes, and then they went over to the Sun Chronicle, a very good collaborative relationship, but the answer is in the past, we did the routes and then we sent them directly into the Sun Chronicle. Bloom Transportation was not as involved in the development of the routes in the past as they were this year and they will be going forward.
Good. Because now we're actually going by the contract stating that this is part of your contract, this is what needs to be done, where previously it wasn't happening, and now we're just stepping it up saying, you're the busing company, this is your contract, you, you just need to, which is good. All right, perfect.
Yes.
So hopefully the next two years, because of that, it should be all in Bloom's hands. Attleboro Public Schools should just be sending off to them, here's our new enrollees, if they add a street somewhere because they made a new development.
Correct.
And everything really shouldn't be as difficult as maybe it was in the past.
Right. Mrs. Fratato.
Because I'm, because I know like every year, there seems to be always like, like we, we receive like thousands of pupils and, oh my gosh, and the buses, they're not arriving on time, we don't have this and that. So it's just smoother transition and hopefully after this year, it should be where it's just this, you know, minor than major.
Yes.
So that's what I just, okay, good.
Yes.
And I'm happy that you are on top of the contract. This is their job, this is what we're giving them, and that's good. That's a positive, positive thing.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Fratato. And to piggyback on your comment, as long as we keep, and we will keep those lists updated, the transition to the next fiscal year, there are always going to be changes.
Absolutely.
There are going to be new students that are going to be coming in.
Yep.
Naturally, we're going to have students rolling over from pre-K to kindergarten and so on, but the, the transition to the next fiscal year should go smoothly as long as we keep those lists updated, and, and we will.
Right.
And clearly, the schools have a strong interest in keeping those lists updated, and Bloom Transportation has a strong interest in keeping the, the routes updated.
And I'm happy to hear you say, here you go, Bloom, this is what we're giving you and here you go, we need to run with it and keep it smooth.
Yes.
And you're right on the contract and making sure that things, you know, go the way they should, so thank you.
You're welcome.
And it's tough to jump into something that has been, I would have to say, it's been a little crazy, I would say, in the last two to three years regarding our busing. So thank you for being on top of it and, you know, sticking with the contract and making sure that things, you know, in the future, follow the contract. So that's great. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mrs. Fratato.
Ken.
I do, like when we out, went out to bid last time, we have what number we asked for for full-size buses, but how are we, how are we doing with the estimate to the smaller buses?
Mr. Perrin, can you repeat your question, please?
When we out to bid, we had 29 full-size buses in the contract.
Yes.
I cannot remember the number off the top of my head of the small buses we estimated that we would need.
11.
11, so we're right on that number.
Yes.
And do we have any reason to believe that we might go over capacity?
It's still too early to tell. It, the answer is, it's still too early to tell. At this point, we have 27 regular buses on, on, on the ground, working well, working effectively, and the drivers are doing a very, very good job. There's no question that our mini buses are also maxed, and they're, they're also doing a, they being the drivers, are doing a good job of transporting the students. So to answer your question, we're at 11 on the mini buses, whereas 27 on the regular buses, and Bloom Transportation is working very, very hard, very well with the schools in trying to juggle the students and get them on the right buses, and yet also trying not to add on more vehicles than is necessary and certainly add on more vehicles that, that we don't want them to. So we're going to try to keep it as low as we can. For now, it's a 27 and 11, and we'll, we'll keep working with Bloom and Bloom's doing a good job.
In, in October, when we have the, the full kind of report, sometimes we, I think sometimes we kind of lose sight of the smaller buses and we talk about just the big bus, so let's just keep that in our mind.
Completely agree. You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Rose.
Yes.
The two buses we're not using, is that like spares? Is that what they kind of use them for?
You mean vehicles 28 and 29?
Yeah. How did, what is, how do they work into the?
The answer to your question, Mrs. Fratato, was my, I wouldn't, I don't want to use the word requirement. My guidance to Bloom Transportation was, please use 26 buses. And they, when they developed the routes in conjunction with our transportation office, they had it at 26. The Friday before the start of school, Mark Bloom came to Tom, we had to put on that 27 bus. So the answer to your question, it's not like we have two buses that are out there in the spare and they're, and they're just in a lot not being used. We have two buses that Bloom hasn't purposely put on the board because at this point, we're not certain that we're going to need those two buses because of our demand. If we do need to get those two buses, then Bloom will bring those buses into, into play and we'll go from there. So I, I guess I wouldn't want to call them spares. I would, I would say that we've got two, Bloom knows full well, they've got two buses. If they need to, they'll add, they'll bring them in, and right now, it's, it's still uncertain as to whether we're going to go up to the 28th or the 29th bus. The billing that we'll receive naturally will only be based on the buses that are used.
Okay.
And for now, it's 27 buses.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ken.
Sorry, I got one more quick question.
Yes.
How do, how do we get the information to Bloom? How does our transportation office, they send it by fax or do they like send them files and they can just download? That way there's no typo information?
Mr. Perrin, good question. And the answer to your question is through two ways. In late June, we transferred all the files that we had over to Bloom electronically. Specifically, there was a flash drive that was given. Here are the files. And that's what Bloom used as their basis in developing the routes and also in developing the lists, which are in the process of being updated. But if we were to go into school, let's say we were to go into the Thatcher School tomorrow and we find out that there's a new student on board, or we find out that a student needs a bus and is not on a bus, but should be, the way that communication occurs is the school secretary fills out a transportation request form, faxes it to Bloom, Bloom then takes that document and then updates the list. And so that's what's been occurring over the last three to four days. The communication from the schools to Bloom, these are the changes that we need you to make, Bloom, because these are changes that we're making on the fly. Please go ahead and get them reflected in the file so that we're all on the same sheet of music.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris.
I know it's really early, but I just wanted to know if you have any sense of whether or not we're going to meet the 45-minute target. Maybe not, are we? I know it's way too early to get that question answered.
It is too early, but.
Mr. O'Neill, I can, I can tell you full well that Bloom is well aware of that 45-minute requirement.
Yep.
They're also well aware of the fact that under no circumstances is any driver going to do anything that would be not prudent to meet that 45-minute requirement. But the good news is this, the school committee put that rule in place, Bloom is well aware of it, and the way the routes are being developed as much as possible, it's to comply with that 45-minute deadline. Now, as the routes shake out, it'll be easy to tell just how realistic was that 45-minute requirement, where do we have some gaps, and wherever we have gaps, there's always a solution, but those solutions will be reached with Bloom Transportation in conjunction with our, our transportation office and if need be, with the school committee.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave.
Thank you. Mr. Rose, I know you just alluded to this, but as I told you privately and I'll tell you publicly, when we're talking about variables that change from year to year with regard to bus policies, the 45-minute policy that Mr. O'Neill just mentioned, and again, I know that you are well aware of this, I know that your staff is well aware of this, I know more than anyone else, the drivers are all fully well aware of this, but I do feel a responsibility to say that one of the variables that will not change under any circumstances is the speed that the buses travel.
Totally agree.
And it was talked about in the discussion when the policy was put into place. I know it's been talked about with you and your staff, but it will be, whenever this comes up, I would, I would say that you can expect to hear it again.
Understand.
There are no circumstances under which the first priority will not be for those students to be transported safely.
Totally agree.
Again, I know that you're aware of that and I know that the drivers are well aware of this.
Yes.
Dr. Durkin.
We're not going to compromise any child's safety to meet a policy or a requirement. So I want to assure the committee for that. If there are issues where we are going over 45 minutes, Tom and I have talked about that, we will be making them clear to you to the reasons why, but there is no way we are going to do that. And so I just want to give.
And I do appreciate that, Dr. Durkin, as I said several times, I know that every driver's aware of that, I know that every staff member's aware of that, and it's one that everyone throughout the community will be aware, that the first priority will be that the safe transportation of the students.
And.
So thank you for your awareness of that. And as Dr. Durkin said, if issues come up.
Right.
You know, all, we, we just need them communicated.
If I may, I think your point is a good one, though, Mr. Murphy, because though we don't communicate directly to the drivers, Tom has spent a great deal of time talking with Bloom. He has been on this 24/7 over the weekend, et cetera, and I think the message, even though we're saying that here, is very important to the person who is behind the wheel.
Yeah.
And, and I know Tom has been expressing that. So your point is a good one, that we can say that here, we're not compromising safety, but individuals may feel whatever undue pressure, we want to be clear that that is not pressure either myself as a superintendent or the school committee wants drivers to feel, and we're talking about children's lives at stake, as well as kids at times take longer to get on and off buses. I mean, that's what happens. Kindergarten legs are only so big, and, you know, that's, you know, whether the weather changes through that. And I think we have to have a sense of patience that we're transporting 4,500 kids and climbing every day in terms of seeing that. So I thank the committee for the patience you're showing, but please allow us to be able to express that, but I appreciate the message that you're trying to send. Thank you.
Ken.
And I think Dr. kind of touched on the point, but obviously administration, the school committee, then the vendor, the teachers, everyone in the school system's looking into bus, and so it's not the school committee's patient, we also ask the parents at home just to give us a little time, we got to work on these buses as quickly as possible. Stuff sometimes happens that will slow down a bus by the most bonpot safety and try to meet all the goals we perform.
Yes.
Any other questions on transportation? Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a professional development summary. Dr. Durkin and Dave Siew.
Mr. Siew. Well, we had a busy summer this summer, a lot of educators doing a lot of really important and great work. I'd like to highlight five key areas as, as a byway of summary. We had teachers working a lot on curriculum, especially in English and math, but also in science, social studies and ESL. We had teachers working on content-specific pedagogy in the areas of English, math and, and ESL. We had several teachers involved in state trainings. Again, ELA and math were involved, we had some teachers involved in some of the Race to the Top initiatives that we're involved in as part of the grant. We had some teachers get trained in WEDA, which is the new curriculum, curriculum for our ESL students. And we also had a number of people in the district trained on the data warehouse, which is how the state shares assessment data with the district, and so people can access that and share data with the necessary people. We had a lot of work done this year on induction, which is how we bring new educators into the district and train them in what it means to be an educator here in Attleboro. We had our new teacher orientation at the end of August, and we also had a mentor refresher training at the end of August as well. And lastly, we did a lot of work on evaluation. We have a new evaluation system that we're very proud of, and if we're going to have it work the way it's supposed to, we need to make sure that everybody knows how to do what they're supposed to do. So we had the evaluators began their training this August, and they have some more hours that they're going to log this fall as we make sure that everyone is capable, all the evaluators are capable of doing the work. And the educators themselves began on the first day of school, both Dr. Durkin and her convocation touched on the evaluation system, and then they received about 45 minutes of training in their buildings as a, as sort of an introduction. The next training for that evaluation system will be on the September 9th early release day, which I'll take this opportunity.
September 9th.
Oh, 19th, yes. Sorry, slurring my words. Which, I'll take this opportunity to remind everybody it's next week and that's been moved, it was on some calendars, it's the 26th, but we moved it to the 19th, so that's coming So that concludes my summary of summer PD.
Mr. Siew. Dave.
Mrs. Siew, with regard to, I think the concept you said was induction with regard to sort of like orienting new teachers.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just curious, if there isn't a very short answer to this, feel free to tell me to, you know, bring it up some other time, but are there, just professionally, are there different induction procedures for new teachers depending on sort of where in a teacher's professional journey that individual might be joining the school system? For instance, like some teachers may have worked 10 years outside of education and decided
decided to become a teacher later in life. Obviously, other teachers will come in straight from college or grad school.
We have two different types of mentors in the district. We call them Component A and Component B mentors. And Component A mentors are people who are new to education, and they receive a very specialized...
Are they people who are like new to adulthood, or... Component B is just new to full-time work?
Component B people are new to Attleboro, but maybe not new to teaching.
Okay, okay, so they're the later in life?
No, no, they may have, if I may, they may have taught in somewhere else, out of state. It's very important in induction of what is the culture of Attleboro and what are our expectations here. So you may have taught five, ten years, perhaps in Norfolk, or maybe even out of state. We don't, you know, it's a different type of induction, but clearly, expectations are very high here, and we want people to know what's it like to be an Attleboro teacher.
So it's more an Attleboro orientation than a public education generally?
Well, when teachers are initially licensed, when they get there, literally, it's called an initial licensure. There's a requirement that they participate in an induction program, and there are guidelines set by the state that we have to make sure that our program meets, that they need to prove that they participated in when they go to apply for their professional license. So, you know, you have one group of people who, aside from just the general, you know, what's Attleboro like, what do you guys expect of me, there's also the need to meet these requirements. And then there are other people who have already met that requirement, they have their professional...
State requirements, yeah.
Yes. And so what they're just looking for is, you know, what does it mean to teach in Attleboro, and what is it that are the expectations? So that's why there's two different levels. But they all participate in one induction program where, you know, there's two slightly different paths within that.
And with regard to the mentoring, is it, does every faculty member have a mentor, or is it every faculty mentor up to a certain year of experience point, or...
I'm not sure I understand the question.
How many of our teachers have mentors, or staff mentors? Is that just for teachers?
Every new educator gets a mentor.
Just for the first year, or...
That has been the way it's going, but we just completely revised the induction program, so I'd have to check to see exactly how long it lasts now, but one year is definitely what the requirement is.
Thank you, I was just curious.
There might be follow-up activities in years two and three, but I don't think you'll have the same, I know you won't get the same formal mentoring you would in those years, as you do in the first year.
Thank you.
Dave, when does officially, when does the teacher evaluation start taking place?
Two weeks ago. Sorry, I mean...
Well, I mean, on a certain level, it started with the first day. But because we're doing a new evaluation system, you know, we're trying to time things so that we get a chance to train people in whatever aspect we're working on before we start really having expectations for that. So most of the system isn't gonna really come online until after that training on the nineteenth. But there are people who are conducting observations every day, and that is, you know, acceptable practice, but, you know, the real, the real components, the system will be covered, and the teachers will get the training they need, and the evaluators will then be conducting meetings that really help to get us off on the right start after that training. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sawyer.
Oh, Mike, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Brandon.
No, that's okay. Before we go to the superintendent's recommendation to approve, can you just update, because I had questions asked, when the MCAS scores are coming out, and when you'll be publicly at a meeting?
Sure. We have had the preliminary data for ELA, English Language Arts, since June, and we had the math data since August. It is still embargoed. Last week, we received more district data. My guess, and I'll ask Mr. Sawyer for confirmation, is probably before the next meeting, the commissioner will come out publicly what it is. So our plan is, we have it tentatively scheduled, I spoke to Mr. Tyler for the twenty-fourth meeting, if not, the meeting after that. It is embargoed until the commissioner makes it public, so, and I anticipate that should be happening relatively soon.
Yeah, historically, it would be soon. My only concern is that the release on some of the data that we get to preview was very late in coming out, which I think revealed that the state is having its own struggles to meet some of the changes it's created for itself. And so there might be a ripple effect, and therefore, it might come out a little bit later than we're used to, but historically, we would be set to go by the twenty-fourth.
The other part that's important for the committee to realize is we're in a new accountability system this year. Massachusetts successfully requested and got approved a waiver from the No Child Left Behind system, which basically was, you meet AYP, yes or no. And if you recall, we were in all different levels of AYP, whether it be restructuring or needs improvement, et cetera. Now there are five levels, one being the best, and five being a state takeover. So that will be important information to explain to the committee what that new accountability system means, where does Attleboro fall as a district, and where do our schools fall. So we are not trying to be secretive, but there is an absolute mandate that no one can know about the data until it is publicly released. And once the commissioner releases it, my practice has always been, even if we had to call a special meeting, I'm not advocating that, I want the committee to hear it before the press gets it. So we will have to decide, you know, when we know, you will know, so.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to our personnel report. Mr. Sawyer?
No, superintendent's recommendations.
What's that?
Personnel, oh, I'm sorry, right there, I missed it, I apologize.
All right, so I have three resignations to announce this evening. The first is Carrie Brule, a sped teacher at Hill Roberts, effective August thirty-first. Susan Farley, ELL teacher at Willett and Hill Roberts, effective August twenty-fifth. And Brian Warburton, English teacher at the high school, effective August twenty-eighth. I have a number of appointments. These are the late summer appointments. Social studies teacher at the high school, we have Molly Adams. Erica Alves is a sped teacher at the high school. Brianna Coyne is a science teacher at the high school. Daniel Frank is the new CTE Technical Drawing teacher at the high school. Scott Fertado is a CTE Auto teacher at the high school. Paula Garland is a preschool sped teacher at the ELC. Joseph Gorman is a high school English teacher. Jennifer Lynch is an elementary ESL teacher. Lori Marshon is a CTE Medical Assisting Teacher at the high school. Christine Moniz is a sped teacher at the high school. Kelly Mulhill is a inclusion specialist at Brennan. Thomas Whitaker is a PE teacher at Hyman Fine. Jennifer Weisick is an English teacher at Wamsetta. Emily Azik is a paraprofessional for the Insights Program at Willett. Christine Donahue is a paraprofessional for the library at Studly. Kristen Foley is a paraprofessional for preschool at the ELC. Casey McNamara is a paraprofessional for the LEAP program at Willett. And Matthew Travallin is a paraprofessional for the Network Program at the high school. This concludes the personnel report. I also have...
It's the superintendent's recommendation to approve the following positions. Dr. Durkin, do you have a brief overview of this?
Sure. These positions are known to you each year. That title is one that is in the policy, but that's when we had more than one attendance officer. John has been with us several years and does a very strong job of making sure our kids come to school, and also deals with residency issues when there are questions. And we have two school nurses, both based because of retirements, Lisa Gleason, who will be at Thatcher, and Sheri Night-Cloud, who will be at Hill Roberts. I ask that the committee approve these four appointments. Thank you.
Let me put the motion out first, Brandon.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, the motion out to approve the following individuals to, under Master General Law, to be approved for their positions, the school physician, Raymond Enswell, the school nurse, Lisa Gleason, Gleason, I'm sorry, the school nurse, Sheri Night-Cloud, and the supervisor of attendance, John Newport.
We only have one attendance officer? I'm sorry, we only, we do, all right, 'cause in the policy, 'cause we have supervisor, supervisors.
I know.
Was that cut due to budget, like previously, did we always...
Since I've been here six years, we've only had one attendance officer. You can choose to amend the policy, and maybe put and/or, including attendance officer, but we have it as supervisor, because that's the way it was written in the policy, and didn't want to confuse the committee, but technically, he is the attendance officer, because he is one of one.
And he's five days a week, like, or how is that?
Mr. Newport works a great deal on weekends also, because many times, families are not home during the week, so yes.
It's a full-time position?
It is, but it is a position that is a small amount of a stipended position, it's not a full-time position.
Okay.
We can get you that information of what the cost is.
No, I only question it because you have one person from K through twelve, I mean, that's...
Yes, very challenging.
Right, that's what I mean, so I'm just kinda looking at that, like, wow, 'cause how can you really...
He does an amazing job, but as you can imagine...
And I know the principals do well of, like, saying, ooh, I might have a question here and there, and he looks into it.
Right, and he also works, as I said, regarding the residency issues, which can be quite serious at times.
All right.
You know, in terms of investigations.
All right, wow.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion passed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Finance facilities, so here we're subgrading, Mr. Ken Parent.
Kind of, last minute, I did ask Tom just to really briefly speak. As we all know, we approved a parking lot to be redone here at the high school. I wanted Tom to give a brief overview, because as we know, it's driving, it hasn't got there yet, so, Tom, if you could just briefly tell us what's going on in the city.
Absolutely, Mr. Parent, thank you very much. The work for the parking lot will take place in October. We are advertising in the, similar to the athletic trainer contract, we're crossing ITs, dotting our i's, and being extra cautious. We're gonna advertise in the Goods and Services Bulletin on the seventeenth, a week from today, the Central Register, a week from Wednesday, the nineteenth, and it'll also be, it being this Request for Proposal, will also be appearing in the Sun Chronicle next Monday, the seventeenth, and then the following Monday, the twenty-fourth. The game plan is, let's give all of the interested bidders two weeks to submit their bid for pretty much repaving and sealing and patching up our parking lot at the high school. There is a Request for Proposal, which is available, and what we're looking at really is seven thousand square feet, I'm sorry, seven thousand linear feet within the Attleboro High School parking lot that we want, per our conversation, per our discussion from the last school committee meeting, to be redone, repaved, with new paint and new lines. The bids are gonna be due on Wednesday, the third of October, at ten AM, at which time I will be there naturally with Jason. Any member of the school committee is welcome. It'll be ten o'clock here in central office. We will then select a vendor, we'll go to the finance committee for approval, then we'll go to the school committee for approval, and then things go the way we hope, we'll give the vendor the green light the day after the school committee meeting, and we'll get started. Then there should be sufficient time to get the job done this fall. And that's a little bit of the background on the work that we've got scheduled.
Mr. Rose? Go ahead, Michael.
You're saying repaving, repaving or crack filling? Well, let me give you, let me give you some specifics. We're gonna seal approximately seven thousand linear feet of cracks, one quarter inch by one inch wide, by cleaning with blown air. We're gonna apply polyfiber reinforced joint sealant that meets or exceeds federal highway specs. On the parking area of approximately one hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred square feet, we're gonna clean the area of dirt and debris using high-power blowers, we're gonna chemically treat oil stains, we're gonna apply two coats of car tar emulsion, which meets or exceeds government specs, we're gonna apply a third coat of sealer to the entrances and the travel lanes where applicable, and we're gonna repaint lines and pavement markings as existing. And right now, that consists of five hundred and twenty lines, six handicap, two no parking, three hundred feet for fire lane, four areas of hash, two crosswalks, three hundred linear feet curving, period. So that's, those are the specifics that are in the bid for proposal, and the interested vendors will give us a price based on those specifics.
Now, now, we set a limit of twenty-five thousand here, so by no means would we have to accept anything higher than that, correct?
Well, let's, the answer to your question, Mr. Parent, is, let's see what shakes out on the third of October. We, you're right, on the button, we know exactly how much money we want to spend on this, and who knows, maybe we can come up with some real significant savings. The key for us is to advertise thoroughly, which we're going to do, try to get as many people interested in asking for a copy of this Request for Proposal, and then hoping to get as many bids as we possibly can, so we can create a good competitive environment, get a real good vendor at a good price, move forward, get the job done for the fall, and move forward into November. So that's our game plan.
If you could, I was gonna say, if you could, could we put that on the meeting for Wednesday?
Absolutely.
Finance committee? It's on, yeah, that's on our...
All right, sorry, and we could just put the back in the packet?
Sure.
Question, on the other schools, like, I noticed some of the middle schools in that, that the lining, just like for crosswalk, the lines in the parking lots, that's our responsibility, that's not the city's responsibility, correct? For the, I'm not talking about, like, for instance, I know on some of the middle schools, the crosswalk where they go across when the buses line up, they're no longer, the lines are not even, you know, you can't even see them anymore. So that's our responsibility as a school district, correct? Or...
I promise you, I'll get back with you tomorrow.
Okay.
Because I would, I would like to be more specific with an answer.
Okay.
And be very honest with you, I'd like to obtain more specific information from you, Mrs. Fertado, as to exactly what school you might be referring to, or what lines you might, can you please be more specific?
Oh, absolutely.
By what?
Absolutely. I know, like, at Wamsetta, I mean, of course, 'cause I'm there, there's the lining in the parking lot, there's hardly any on a certain part, but my, mostly I'm concerned is the part where, when the kids have to cross, all the buses are lined up waiting for the kids to get on the bus, they have to cross as walkers, a lot of those lines, you can't see, they need to be relined. So that was one of my concerns, and I've been through Brennan, and I didn't really see them there either, so I'm just wondering. Now, I know previously, too, when we were thinking about lining the high school parking lot and filling it in the cracks, that we were trying to get a bid at one time for all the schools to be either...
Correct.
Sealed, lined, to try to group it, so we'd have a better price.
Yes. We're not able to do that.
Okay, because it's too expensive, it's just something that's, okay. So my suggestion would be, or something I'd be concerned with is the lining, like, just the crosswalks, the things like that in the parking lots for the students, just for safety reasons, too, so if you can look into that, that'll be good, okay?
By all means, yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
To Ms. Fertado's point, if, I don't know if it's the city or the school district that has responsibility about the lining of crosswalks and parking lots, but could we just do a review and make sure that we're not missing crosswalks somewhere? Because if we are, I don't know that that's something that we would want to wait to go out to bid. I mean, it seems to me that it's a small enough job where we should get a bucket of paint and go put some crosswalks in. And if that's the case, in Wamsetta or any other building, we should be doing that, you know, immediately, I would think.
I understand.
And just, Ken, and just to say, I mean, the teachers are out there, they're crossing them fine, no one's in a hazard, you know, a hazard zone, but it would be nice to actually update and at least see them and have them, you know, as the buses are lining up, and we have that, but it's more, you know, on the forefront, I mean, as you say. Just, yeah, just wondering. I know at one time it was done, and again, I don't know if it was the city or SEDEX, I don't know, like, you know, Mr. Murphy mentioned, you know, bucket of paint, have, I don't know, the janitorial, so I don't know, so.
I'm happy to do it, Tom, just give me a brush.
But thank you, thanks, Ken.
And also, Tom, if you could, since we'll be sending packets out for the finance meeting this week, could we also include the athletic trainer?
Yes.
We'll just put the pack in there, that way everyone in the committee gets to see that.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, now to the normal business. Notification of bills and warrants, I have two. First one dated August twenty-second, two thousand twelve, in the amount of three hundred fifty thousand nine hundred ninety-two, nine hundred twenty-nine dollars and four cents, which appropriations make up three hundred thirty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-five cents, special funds, ten thousand eighty-four dollars, seven cents, incumbent special funds of nine hundred ninety dollars, federal and state grants of one thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars and seven six cents, incumbent federal and state funds, seven hundred twenty-one dollars, twenty-eight cents, and revolving funds of two thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars and eight cents. Second one is dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand twelve, in the amount of two hundred eighty-one thousand one hundred seventy cents, seventy-one cents, appropriations of two hundred fifty-one six hundred thirty-five dollars, ninety-three cents, special funds, three thousand seven hundred three dollars, fifty-two cents, federal and state grants, twelve thousand thirty-nine dollars, forty-eight cents, incumbent federal and state grants, eight hundred ninety-five dollars, revolving funds, twelve thousand nine hundred three dollars, seventy-eight cents. Our next meeting, and Dr. Durkin, does this actually have a, cause any conflict for you in the next meeting? Because that's the day of all the elementary open houses.
That's okay. I mean, I think the meeting can go on, I may come in a little bit late, but Mr. Rose will be here, but thank you for asking.
You may come in a little bit late, too.
That's right.
Yeah, that's, if that's okay with you, then we will have the meeting, next meeting, on September nineteenth, that's... September 19th at 7:00.
Mr. Chairman? We're going to curriculum and instructor subcommittee, Mr. Chris O'Neill.
Yep. Nothing to report, except that our next meeting will be held on October 16th, 6:30 p.m. And I just wanted to really quickly mention that the Burgevine Scholarship, I don't know if this is appropriate to mention here or not, but I'm gonna go ahead and do it anyway. The Burgevine Scholarship Foundation is doing their dance this weekend, I'll be with the Elks. I was hoping to go myself, but I have other commitments that are on calendar. That concludes my report. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chris.
Moving on to the policy subcommittee, Brenda Fertado.
I have nothing at this time, Mr. Chair.